Welcome to the March 6, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss a contractual matter and a personnel matter. And can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have introductions, please.
Dave Hurst.
Willow Bear.
Christine Beck.
Chris Meyer.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dallinbaum.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Meredith Muyati.
Judy Kehoe.
I assume we have PIG students here tonight. Your obligation is to stay until 9:00 or the end of the meeting, whichever comes first. If we're still going at 9:00, we'll take a break so you can come up and sign out. If you have any paperwork that needs to be signed, you can see any of the Board numbers to sign that. First up is approval of the minutes of the February 27, 2019 regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next up, Student Senate report.
I'm PJ Napkin, Student Senate. So we just received a really generous donation to our BAC program from the bus garage. So I'd like to thank them for that. So this morning, we voted to give the Science Lake team $300 to help fund their journey to the state's competition. And we also just got approval, Mr. Keys, to start organizing a spring pep rally.
Oh.
Spring is coming.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next is the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate our high school students who recently won the Regional Science Bowl competition at GE's Research Center on Saturday, March 2. It was actually on the news and it's on the website. The event featured 155 students from 12 high schools and 12 middle schools sponsored by the U.S. Department of Energy. And the team will now take a three-day trip to Washington, DC in late April where they'll compete in the National Science Bowl competition and also get to tour around DC a little bit. So congratulations to them. I also wanted to follow up on our school start time committee and what I've received in regards to transportation studies. So I've been in touch with three different individuals, consultants, or companies about doing a study on school start time, which was what the committee had asked that we do for our next step. I met with Bosse's and Niskiuna jointly about the possibility of doing a study with one of their consultants. That was probably, I don't know, three or four weeks ago. I haven't heard anything back from them in regards to a proposal. I did also meet with a rep from Tyler Technologies, who is, that's part of our software. They would actually be able to do a study on our routing based upon times we give them. And that was up to about $14,000 for the study. It wouldn't be more than that. That was probably the high end of it. I also had a call from a gentleman at Transpar and should be getting a proposal for them in the next week or so. This particular group has done quite a bit of work with districts on school start times. They seemed to be a little more comprehensive in their approach. They would do a routing study similar to Tyler, but they also would meet with members of the committee to talk about priorities of the district and then use those to establish parameters in looking at the routing options. So in general, speaking with all of them, the individual from Transpar seemed to have the most experience in this particular area. But until I have a quote, obviously, we had talked about maybe doing two different studies, but depending on the cost, we may want to, you know, start with one and see what the results are. And they all had said that they could get it done if not by the end of the school year, certainly sometime early in the summer. So that could go back to the committee for review to determine what the next steps would be. So.
Isn't, is it, is it, Niskiuna's working with them, right? Because they're moving in this direction, kind of?
Well, they have a committee. Gilderlin has a committee in East Green Bush. Niskiuna's looking to get a transportation study done, which is why we had met with Bosse's. But the consultant that I spoke with hadn't ever done this before, so, and I haven't heard further from them. So I don't know if Niskiuna's made a decision or not.
I thought I just looked up in the paper about it, or I just couldn't.
They put something out recently about it, but I don't know. I haven't heard.
Okay. Fair enough. Maybe we could share some costs of them if they're doing the same price.
Yeah. It doesn't really, I don't think we could really share the cost because every district, they have to look at your specific routing software and also all of the different variables. So I'm not sure it would be.
Okay.
With Bosse's, the only advantage would, you could use, go through a coaster so you get some aid back on it, but.
Okay.
Jody, the Transpar, you said that they had experience doing this before?
Yep.
Do you know how many districts have done it?
They did several in Connecticut and he, a couple in Massachusetts and I believe a few in New York as well. But they're nationwide, so that was just look more regional that they've done the work?
It might be worth talking to one of the, a couple of the districts to see, you know, how satisfied they work with.
He said he'd be happy to give me some references for the districts they've worked with.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the last thing I did want to ask Kathy Johnson, just to provide an update to the Board on the Special Ed Parent Advisory Group that she's met with, I think, a couple times, right? So she had just a couple points she wanted to share with the Board.
So thank you, yeah, and thank you for, the Board, letting me come in for a couple of minutes to talk about this and to the community.
Kathy, can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
We can't hear you.
Not all of that? Really? Sorry about that. How's that?
Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, we began the parent advisory committee, put this back together, and met for the first time in January, just two months ago. That work came from us doing a survey. I'm going to move forward on that. We did a survey late in the, in the fall that I sent to all families involved with special education. We had had an advisory committee back when I started here as the director a number of years ago, eight years ago. And that ran for about three years and then the group just kind of fizzled out and didn't continue. So I decided to do a survey this year, got some feedback from families, and put a group of people together in January for the first time. There were about 45 families that got together. So just really quickly about the survey. We had sent it to all families. I got 160 responses back. Just really quickly up there, the green represents, majority of the folks that responded were from the elementary level, then about 30%, 34% from middle school, and about 20 from the elementary level. Basically, the survey really quickly, I'm not going to go through all of those, was about a 16-question survey. And responses were, whoops, I'm moving away from that. Responses were, for the most part, quite positive, but there were really a few areas that showed that there were some concerns. So we set up the meeting in January and from there determined that we were going to set up some smaller groups to start really doing the work. So we put that group together in February, developed the mission of what our group is, is to really have a partnership between the district and families to work on improving the school experience for students with disabilities. At that meeting, we made the decision of what we would do this year and then what our plan will be moving forward. So we decided that there would be some smaller focused groups. There would be some informational nights where we would have speakers come in. Many of the parents indicated that they wanted some support groups, and we ended up talking about them kind of putting those together themselves, that part not being run by the district. So as of right now, we have three focus groups set up for the remainder of this year and one informational night. Informational, and for each of those groups, there's parent members on the committee as well as school district folks. Informational night is going to be on post-graduation opportunities for our students and that, those invites are going out tomorrow, actually, for all four of these meetings. The smaller focus groups are on the topics that came up as the areas that people wanted to talk about the most. One was communication between the school and families, how to work with students with reading challenges, and then talking about our students that are outplaced and what the district can do for those. So we will be running those meetings in March and April. We'll have one final meeting this year with the whole group, and then we will set our plans for the work we'll do for next year. So. Questions?
Questions?
Just thank you for putting this together. You know, it's a bunch of work, but I, from what I've heard, the parents are very happy that it's moving along.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sure. Just one final announcement on, because it'll be before our next meeting, on March 18th, we do have a parent program. We have an individual, Tom Kirstings, who's coming in and is going to speak to parents about digital citizenship and how to help monitor things your students are doing in the online environment. So hopefully, we'll get a good turnout, good weather, no snow. Oh, yeah, daycare's going to be available as well.
When is that again?
Monday, March 18th, beginning at 6:30 in the auditorium here. It'll probably be the last event in the auditorium. Just, oh, no, the musicals will be. Then it's musical, then it's out of commission. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is the Board of Education report.
I had a couple things. First, I just wanted to congratulate all of our teams that went to the Odyssey of the Mind tournament this past, the regional piece of it, this past Saturday up at Shen. The teams all did a great job and a pretty large number of them are moving on to the state competitions in Binghamton in a few weeks. And then I also wanted to congratulate the BOU on a great fundraiser last night. I participated in the Spelling Bee and had a lot of fun.
And, and you placed second, I believe, wasn't?
Well, yes, I tied with two other teams for second, but I'll take it.
Take, take the second when you can get it.
And what was your team name?
Bewildered. There are only so many, there are only so many B puns one can come up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we are be grateful that you attended.
It was a lot of fun.
Anyone else? Chris?
Sure. I want to thank the Lab School because I attended the barbecue on Saturday, and that was an awesome event. I was totally ignorant. I thought I'd just show up and there'd be barbecue chicken and leave. And there, it's an awesome event. I didn't know what, I had never been, so I didn't know what to expect. So there, I walk in, there's, there was a raffle, there was the silent auction, a huge tray of just ungodly desserts. It was, it was a really, really nice event. The only downside was I took my wife's car and it smelled like Brooks Barbecue for the next three days, and she hated me. But other than that, it was a really, really good event.
It was an excellent event, and I must admit that I did the same thing, only I was smart. I bought extra so that when, you know, when the smell fades, we can, you know, go to the freezer and get some more without the trip to Brooks. I did not, I did not find out yet how much they made, but they did tell me that it was at least comparable to last year, which means something over 10 grand. So it was very successful despite the cold weather. The potatoes were cooked, which we've had, they had problems with potatoes in the past, but it was a well-run event, and I think we can be very proud of the Lab School and everybody that participated in it. They did a great job.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go to Slingerlands today for the fifth grade musical, which I've never done, and it was so cute. It was so cute. Every student had the opportunity to be featured because they do multiple casting. The kids who don't want to be on stage were all on crew. I especially enjoyed going during the day and seeing all of the other classes come in, and the kindergartners sit in the front, and then the first graders, all the way up through the fourth graders, and the bleachers, who knew that they were going to be up on the stage the next year. And you could tell everybody loved the tradition of it, and it's, it's just my new favorite thing. So I saw that it was the 49th year Slingerlands had done it. I'm not sure why the tradition started there and hasn't gone to any other elementary schools. I'd love to see it at, at all of our elementary schools, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And they're doing shows tomorrow night and Friday night, if anybody else wants.
I'll be there tomorrow night?
I'll be there tomorrow as well. Lester Bitor, who writes those plays, has been doing it for years and has done a phenomenal job, especially showcasing, as you said, every child, regardless of talent, regardless of ability, has, you know, has the option to either get up on stage or work the crew. And they're all treated so well, and they do such a great job.
It was really special.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Our presentation this evening is, the first one is the athletics budget proposal presented by our Director of Athletics, Len Keys.
An intro, Mike.
With an intro.
Of course. That goes without saying.
It can't be budget season without me coming up and just saying a few words about it. Do you know how excited I get about this? I'm going to raise the mic now that Kathy was here. Okay. So just, we'd like to start with a quick, a quick recap of the areas that we've covered in the weeks leading up to this. Tonight, we're on our third budget presentation. As we had covered, the baseline expenditures are just shy of $101 million. Our revenues, without any factoring in of the increase in our school taxes line, is at $99.5 million. So we have come into the budget season with a relatively minor gap of $1.5 million. So the object of our budget review is to close that gap in the coming weeks. And the areas that we, oops, too fast. Tax cap, just a reminder, our calculation, the maximum amount that we can do, that still requires a 50% plus one approval, is at 3.54%. Based on the numbers that we're looking at currently, we do not expect that we will need to have a levy at that level in order to balance the budget, but that actual number is still to be determined. Last week, we had covered the transportation program, and their budget is coming in just shy of $68,000 lower than last year's number. And that's a combination of some salary reductions due to some retirements that they had had and some reductions in their equipment line items, so a total of about $6.1 million. They did request permission to reduce the fleet by one with the sale of one of the oldest buses in the fleet. They additionally had requested to replace 14 buses, four of the largest buses, and 10 small buses, at a cost not to exceed $1,088,500. So that, if approved by the Board, will go on as a separate proposition on the budget vote day. Ray Ardelli presented the tech budget and through a review and restructuring of the way in which some of the equipment items will be purchased, was able to modify the budget such that we have a $136,000 reduction in his baseline totals. And if we apply that $136,000 in savings to that gap, we are now down to just under $1.4 million going into tonight's budget review. If anybody's interested, or if they missed one of the meetings where we covered these items in depth, of course, that information is available on our website. But next up, I will turn it over to Len Keys.
Excuse me. Before you do, when would be a time to, I have a question from last week about the technology and the way in which we're purchasing technology. So when would be an appropriate time to, to raise that?
Now.
Okay. The, if I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about instead of buying everything upfront, that we're going to do it over time. How much over time, and how many years are we putting, are we going to be buying this equipment?
Three, correct? Three years.
And the usable life of this equipment, the life cycle?
Three years.
Four.
Or four? Okay.
Okay. And how much more is it going to cost or less by doing it this way? Because it's one thing to say we can buy over time, but we're still spending out the same money plus interest.
Plus the interest. And as we had talked about, I'll get you that exact figure. I don't have it with me tonight. You don't have it, do you? No. Okay. It's a nominal, it's, it's a low interest rate environment. There is a cost, but the benefit that we're getting is the ability to even out those payments over time. Similar, as we had mentioned with the buses, old units are coming off as new units are coming on. So we felt that the benefit of that stability, kind of, it helped you avoid budget creep over time because of that. But I'll get you the exact figure. We have that on the, the quotes that come in from Bosse's.
But if it's through Bosse's, we also get aid on that?
Yes. Yes.
So, so we get aid that we want to get if we bought outright?
Right.
So then it likely should cost us less, is that correct?
I don't know that it costs us less. I mean, there is some aid on the outright purchases.
We purchase these, we purchase these either way, so we would get aid either.
Oh, got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
To me, it just sounds like this should be a line item every year, because if it's like the buses, we're going to have a certain number of computer systems that needs to come off, and we need to purchase new ones. And it sounds like by doing the loan, even though we get aid, we're still accruing debt. So for me, the way I look at this project is we need to incorporate this amount of money every year in our budget and not do, in our, our regular budget.
Right.
And not do any type of loan.
Right.
Because I don't think that the offset from the aid, the, we're just accruing debt. That's the bottom line.
That's a good point.
Yeah. So plan, moving forward, we want to plan for it with an allocated amount every year that will replenish the Chromebooks.
Yeah. So I thought this was just for this year, and then next year, we would find a solution as to how we're going to fund this going forward, which I'm assuming when we implemented the Chromebooks, we had a plan in mind to replenish them. Why this year are we just not paying for them outright?
And it's not just this year. We have, starting back at least three years ago, some installment purchases. We've used the installment purchase program for copiers that we've bought for the district. We've used it on some of the student computer equipment, so. We started to, we actually started installment purchases years ago when we started in the Lab School, the one-to-one with iPads initially, if you remember that.
Right. But there, it's a lot less quantity in the copiers.
Right, exactly. They were, they were much more expensive at that time than the Chromebooks, so, yeah. So what we had talked about, what Ray had advised, is he is looking at the overall replacement plan for the district. He is completing the inventory of all of the equipment. So we had talked last week about how this plan and this adjustment that we had made was essentially a hybrid. We still do have quite a bit of money in there for an outright purchase, and then we do have some allotted for these installment purchases. So the goal is stability. We are looking at what is the net cost, you know, reduction. Well, it's really, it's close to, you know, 2.471 this year and 2.423. We have achieved that stability in the overall budget by structuring it with the combination of outright purchase and installment purchases.
But we're still accruing debt.
Yeah, but like, I understand Christine's saying, but like, you know, I, in terms of budgets, I like the fact, hey, we're saving $136,000. That's great. But a couple of years from now, we have all this interest that we need to pay on this debt, so.
And the principal.
Yeah.
And the principal.
So, the principal, too, yeah. That'd be good to pay. But the, so are we, you know, just kind of kicking the can down the road instead of just paying upfront now and saving us the interest?
I understand that argument. Again, in a lower interest rate environment with a three-year term on the loans, you're really not kicking the can very far down the road. You're taking advantage of a financing tool that districts use regularly. So I hear your point, and we will incorporate that within the report back that we do once we look at the, the inventory, the replacement plan, and the methods of purchasing.
So just, the way I'm looking at this.
Do you want to just pay for it all right now?
Well, that's where I'm going. I'm going with, why aren't we just reducing the budget in some other areas to cover something we know that we have to cover every year? It just seems like creative financing that we don't want to cut in other areas, or we want to make sure, because we're spending the same amount of money as 2.471 from 1819, and the revised baseline, taking that out, is 2.423. And if we had it in, it'd be 2559. So why don't we just have a 2559 and look where we have to reduce, where we have to reduce? Because this is an ongoing thing that we have to cover.
What is, what is the interest rate? When you say low, low interest rate environment, roughly, what do you expect?
It was about 2.7 or 2.8, under 3%.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's definitely low. I still don't like the idea of kicking the can.
But we still have to pay 130, well, offset the aid. It's, there's no benefit to it. We're just delaying the inevitable, which is we have to pay for.
It's such a small amount. I don't see the benefit. I understand what you want to do and what is achieved here. I'm just not sure that I see the benefit to us long-term.
You want us to take a look at what it would be if we didn't do that as an installment and just purchased it outright this year and bring it back to the Board and the update at our next meeting? Well, if we purchased it outright, it will be the baseline 1920, the $2,559. Oh.
Yeah. I mean, the numbers are there. It's just.
It would just be an increase of 136,000.
So is, are people more comfortable doing that?
Well, it's really like, what is, what was the rationale behind doing it? Are we trying to enable the tech budget to have the same cost without that in there to show that, oh, we're not really going out that much, but really, we still have the debt? Or are we trying to just reduce it from other areas? I just, I don't understand the whole purpose that we were trying to finance it.
I think the idea is to even out the payments every year instead of having peaks and valleys.
But each year, there would be. The same cost.
If you're purchasing the same amount.
It's the same thing every year.
If you're purchasing the same amount every year, would be roughly the same.
The same.
And if we pay it directly, there's no, there's no interest cost, which means we're saving that 2% to 3%, which over time, we can put someplace else rather than put into debt service. I mean, I think it's a small enough amount that we might want to seriously consider this as a way to save some money.
It's, yeah, it's not a big, this year with budget, we're in pretty good shape, so it's not, it's not about cutting in other areas.
Right.
I totally, sorry. I totally understand, but like, like, we want to smooth out the cost so there's no, you know, jumps or fluctuations, you know? We like consistency. But in the same instance, if we're saying that, you know, we can buy a Chromebook now for $300 cash, or we can loan it out for $320, and we had the money already, why don't we just spend the $300 upfront instead of paying 320?
And we can do that. Again, we were trying to take the longer-term view and look at not just this coming year, but the next several years in terms of keeping it stable. So it's not a huge impact, 136,000 change out of the 100 million. We can do whatever you would like to do. So is the general thought that you'd prefer to just.
I'd prefer to.
Put it back in there.
If we buy them all outright, right? So we add that extra $136,000 back in, what does it look like next year?
$136,000.
So the prices could go up.
Well, or higher, depending on the cost of the Chromebook.
The equipment, the equipment number would be the same as it is, it would be that 612 plus?
Plus or minus.
Plus, minus.
And does the Bosse's aid stay the same either way?
Well, the Bosse's aid percentages will fluctuate from one year to the next. Historically, they haven't changed.
Either way, we do it this year, we get the same percentage.
The same percentage, yes, on this year's expenditures. Yes.
So if we're still, we're spending about the same amount, then next year and the year after, then going forward, we would still be in that sort of.
Right.
Steady, steady rate.
I'd like to see how it looks with that in it at the end of the process, so that.
With the overall.
With the overall, because it's such a, in relative terms, I mean, not to my own personal pocketbook, but in relative terms, it's a small amount. I think it's something that, since we're going to be built. that, since we're going to be bill buying these things on a regular basis, we should build it in, and it seems we can do it without an interest cost, so we can use that money somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I will now turn it back to Mr. Keys.
And I will lower the microphone again. Good evening, everyone, I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to share our 1920 budget. Before we do that, I just wanted to kind of remind everyone of the breadth and depth of our interscholastic athletic program. Bethlehem Central is represented by 80 interscholastic athletic teams. You see our 30 varsity programs, 22 JV, four freshmen, 22 modified, and the two unified, our unified bowling and unified basketball, so totaling 80. You might notice, for those of you who've been on the board for some time, or who have known the makeup of our program, you do see a shift to less freshman-level teams and more modified-level teams. And that's just the shift of not only our league and the suburban council, but the section as well. So that just kind of is reflective of that.
Could you just quickly clarify the difference between freshman and modified?
Absolutely, yep. So we start off with the modified level, modified level would be the seventh and the eighth graders, that's kind of your traditional middle-school athletics. We do have some athletic programs that have something called Modified 9, which would be students in grades seven, eight, and nine can participate in that. Freshman level is simply that, we have students that are traditionally ninth graders, there is a formal SED process, formerly known as selective classification, now it's called advanced physical placement, where students of middle-school ages can go through a fairly lengthy formal SED process to allow them the opportunity to try out for high-school level teams, but that's who comprises that. Then, of course, the JV varsity.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to start off with is our budget overview. Just to kind of remind everyone, this is a consolidated summary of the items that fall under athletic budget codes. So that's not the entire cost of everything associated with athletics, we have items such as our, the salaries of our groundskeepers, who obviously, those budget codes are under Mr. Nolte, transportation, our bus drivers, under Cindy Jurwitz, who, our drivers take us all over the section. So just, just to kind of keep that in mind, of course, salaries for the office and things of that nature. But the first item you see there is a, is a slight increase in 1920 over this year, 1819, which would be the cost of our coaches, chaperones, and our district athletic trainer, that's just collective bargaining. The league, the suburban council has required more chaperones at away contests, so we do have a slight increase there. In this day and age of safety and supervision, it's pennies on the dollar, it's much needed. Second item is our general default equipment code, we are looking at purchasing some just replacement equipment for our field hockey and girls volleyball programs. The third item, and we call it officials' fees and security, just because those are two of the larger items in, in that particular collection of budget codes. I'm going to show you another slide that will give you a little bit more detail. So as you see here, as I mentioned, officials' fees, which by the way, you'll see a little later, the officials are under contract negotiations with the section, so there, we are looking at a slight increase in that area, I'll kind of touch on that a little bit more in a bit. We have the ICE rental fees at the Bethlehem YMCA. In addition, that's, that's not up there, those are just some of them. We also have the greens' fees for the two golf courses, for our junior varsity and varsity golf teams, our lanes' fees for Dell Lanes. We have entry fees, which would be our invitationals and tournaments for our track and field, cross-country, wrestling programs, lifeguard fees, of course, the police coverage, as the Bethlehem police are at all of our varsity football, any of our evening contests, varsity girls and boys basketball, senior nights for lacrosse for the girls and the boys as well. And then we have equipment reconditioning, which is state mandate, where all of our football helmets are sent out each year to be reconditioned. Sometimes those helmets are rejected, and we need to purchase replacement helmets, but those are just some of the items. In addition to, we have Section 2 fees, we have NISFA fees, suburban council fees, so those are all items that are in that 182 line, $182,000 line. The next line you see is BOSI's and other program expenses. Fortunately, about a year, maybe two years ago, several of the programs that we utilize as a league were able to be BOSI's adable, that includes something called Schedule Galaxy, which is our scheduler for the league, schedules our games, it's on, it's a web-based program. We also have something called Huddle Services, which we have a district account, where all of our programs have the ability to use video as an instructional tool, more and more, that's become very prevalent in a wide array of sports, and the company that we have this agreement with is known as Huddle, H-U-D-L. Huddle basically is really branching out into more and more platforms, so more and more of the programs that our league and our district offers are going to be in that account. Also included in that line would be our general athletic supplies, our consumables, as well as our uniforms. And then you, you see the total. So there's a modest increase from budget to budget. Break down our program a bit further, we have exactly even numbers of female and male programs, we have 15 female sports offerings, 15 male, and we have three coeducational teams, which would be our modified swim team and both of our unified teams, those are all coed. The district has budgeted 102 athletic coaches, we have six program assistants, if you're not familiar, program assistants are our booster-funded assistants, our booster clubs fund those extra assistant coaches. We have three genuine volunteer coaches, all state-certified, holding coaching licenses, but are not paid by the school district. And again, as you, as I mentioned earlier, total of 80 teams, and you can just see the breakdown between fall, winter, and spring. Currently, or based on last year's numbers, obviously, we were a year behind as we compile the numbers, slightly over 1,800 students in grades seven through 12 comprise our interscholastic athletics program. Some of those students are multi-sport athletes, however, that amount, the amount of two and three sport athletes is declining, that's something that's being seen across the nation as we get into sports specialization, you might hear students kind of playing a sport that they tend to feel that they're strong in year-round. We have done a couple of studies looking at numbers, and we are looking at approximately 63.7% of students in grades seven through 12 participate in our program. So it's something that many of our students have, have a place and a, and a spot in our athletic program. I'm asking for a couple of additions to our budget for the 1920 school year. The first I wanted to mention was the addition of a varsity assistant soccer coach for our girls soccer and our boys soccer programs. A couple of years ago, we added a multiple varsity assistants, and it's, in this day and age, it's really vital for an instructional standpoint, a supervision standpoint. Both of our soccer programs are amongst the very best, not only in the league, but in the state, and in order to kind of compete, continue at that competitive level, that's something that I would, I would highly recommend. Our modified outdoor track and field, we are looking to have an assistant coach, the numbers have skyrocketed. First year, we had numbers in the 50s, last year, we were in the 90s, and as we have now, we are starting spring modified, we are looking at 126 boys and girls in grades seven, eight. So obviously, this has exploded. A good problem, but with that, of course, means we need additional supervision to safely and capably instruct these new athletes in that program. So this, these are, this is that level where we are really trying to teach fundamentals, how to run safely, and of course, all those other really great things with interscholastic athletics of, of being a teammate, prioritizing your time. So with that number of kids, we truly do need a third coach. Kind of brings me, it definitely dovetails to the next piece, the implementation of a formal BC athletics coaches retreat. Finding qualified, interested coaches, athletic coaches is becoming a, a bigger and bigger hurdle and challenge. We have really established very good relationships with the local colleges for recent graduates, student athletes who participate in those programs at the college level, but retaining and finding new coaches is really, is really a challenge. One of the items that I believe can go a long way is really making our athletics coaches feel that, that they're very valued and that their professional development is extremely important. As you all know, the interscholastic athletics program is an extension of our educational program, it's vital. So, so that $2,000 budget line would be bringing in speakers, having the program be off-site, you know, we have good relationships with Century House, where we have the, our administrative retreat, but just something, and each year, we would focus on a certain level, a varsity level, a modified level, and, and really working with our coaches. Third item, sorry, the fourth item would be webcasting of games, Huddle. So just to kind of tell you about that, you recall I mentioned Huddle a few slides ago, we currently have a Huddle package, and again, that is BOSI's adable, this would just be adding on to what we currently have. What we would be doing is in gymnasium B, where we have our boys and girls volleyball games in the fall, as well as our boys and girls basketball games in the winter, that camera would be managed, operated by the district, it would be used, we could use it for a number of ways, coaches could use it each day, obviously, as a practice tool, but it could also be livestreamed, these games can be livestreamed to members of our community. We have a lot of snowbirds, a lot of retirees who are always asking and clamoring for ways to livestream, you know, can we see the games while we're in Florida? You know, obviously, our basketball teams are pretty popular, we have good crowds, and again, this is just kind of in keeping up with the vision of the future of our athletic program. Bless you. So it's, it's a wonderful piece, and again, that's BOSI's adable, so at our BOSI's rate, that would be reduced year two.
I'm assuming we wouldn't be able to webcast games that aren't held in.
Gym B. Right, that's, that would be our, kind of our pilot. What's wonderful about, about Huddle is it's a year-to-year piece, so if we tried it for a year, and we felt, eh, it wasn't as, as, we didn't get out of it as much as we thought we would, we don't have to continue it. Most of the other services are two, three, four-year contracts, which is something we didn't want to enter into. Huddle is working on, though, outdoor cameras as well, they really are the premier organization in this area. So down the line, we could have the fenced field, where hopefully, we're going to have four and five teams consistently playing on there, as well as the football stadium and potentially the YMCA and different things of that nature. But that's just an add-on to what we currently have. Final item would be, as I mentioned earlier, the officials' fees are expected to rise approximately $3,000, those contract negotiations are expected to be complete by early May, so those are those items. And the final piece of information I wanted to share with you this evening is just a, the recommendation of a reallocation of current funds. We, you know, every program, every district has ebbs and flows of the participation numbers, and we're, and we're seeing that, and really, this is just a, a great snapshot of what is going on in the world of, of youth sports. Over the last four or five years, I've been in conversations with the varsity coaches, the modified coaches, and every level in between, for a variety of different programs, but I want us to focus on girls soccer, baseball, softball, so two girls programs, one boys program. These numbers are really stagnating, they've really, the participation numbers have really decreased, almost to the point where on, in some of these seasons, we have coaches in the hallways trying to grab kids to fill out rosters. At the same time, currently, we have three levels of our girls volleyball, boys lacrosse, and girls lacrosse, again, two and one, girls, two girls programs, one boys program, where we only have three, and that's where we're seeing those participation numbers shifting. So lacrosse, I'm, I'm traditionally a baseball person, so for me to see baseball numbers so low, it's, it's really interesting, but then I look over at our lacrosse field, and we are having to cut 20 and 25 young ladies each season for the last four or five seasons, where we're begging students to play softball. So it doesn't seem like a real efficient use of our funds. So the, the recommendation would be to reduce the number of teams within girls soccer, baseball, softball from four to three. Those three programs would be the modified, probably Modified 9, we're working currently with the scheduling committee for the suburban council, so most likely a Modified 9, which would be seventh, eighth, ninth graders, a junior varsity, and a varsity. So we really have every student age covered from seven through 12, which you have to have. And on the other side of it, the increase piece, we'd be looking to add back freshman volleyball, not really add back, but a couple of years ago, we had, we had freshman JV varsity girls volleyball, we did not have modified, so we changed our freshmen to modified. Well, it was such a hit that now our modified girls coach is cutting again 20 to 25 young ladies every fall. We would love to, if we have that middle-school modified freshman JV varsity, again, better allocation of our funds. Boys lacrosse, their philosophy is slightly different than girls lacrosse, girls lacrosse makes cuts, 20, 25 cuts, and keeps approximately 20, 25, which is a good number for that program and that level, where you're doing a lot of instruction. The boys lacrosse program's philosophy, our varsity head coach's philosophy, is to keep everyone, so we're looking at numbers in the mid-50s. Mid-50s is exceptionally high for developmental, fundamental level. People are, the young, these young student athletes are not getting playing time to develop or improve, so by adding a second modified lacrosse team at that level, we'd be able to better accommodate, better instruct those, those student athletes. So it's just basically, again, it's not a budget impact, really, it's just reallocating that money from those four to three to the other three and four programs. Again, reducing and increasing the same, same number of female and male sports, so again, it's just sliding pile from one, the money from one pile to the other to fund those programs.
Are there comparable teams at the other schools in the council?
Yes.
In other words, they would have teams to play against?
Yes, full schedules, yep, full schedules.
I have a couple questions. So which team with soccer, for the girls soccer, are you looking to cut freshmen, or?
We don't have freshman soccer right now, we have Modified 9 in girls, that's one of those programs, we have a couple that are Modified 9. What we would be looking at most likely would be Modified 9, JV, varsity, and we would probably remove just the general modified, because seventh and eighth grade students would be able to obviously participate in the Modified 9. Ninth graders, 10th graders typically would occupy junior varsity spots, and then typically 11th, 12th, and strong athletes, obviously, would occupy the varsity.
What were the numbers in, like, soccer, I'm just using that as an example because it's the first one, what were, what were the numbers per team?
Mid-teens, I'd say, 15, 14, 15, 16, in that ballpark, which is low.
I guess what I'm worried about, I'll just, is the freshman girls who didn't play in middle school having opportunities, I think we talked about, I think it might have been last year, just, you'll just see the seventh and eighth graders going, bumping up to JV and not having that.
That's, that's a different, that's honestly, that's a very different conversation, the very elite, exceptional seventh, eighth grade athlete who's going to play up, those are, there are not very many of them, and those are student athletes who also, because they are advanced, almost like AP students in the world of athletics, their growth should also be something that we're looking to do. So those are, those are, that's a separate piece. Students in the seventh and eighth grade will still have the opportunity, obviously, to play Modified 9, it's a modified level.
No, no, I understand. I, just when I looked at the numbers a while ago, like JV was, it consisted, I think it was last year, it might have been the year before, what, half the team was eighth graders, and so, you know, the ninth graders that were on the Modified 9, they weren't bumping up, I mean, there was a few 10th graders, so.
It wasn't freshman, I think it was JV you were concerned about.
Yeah, it was JV, yeah.
That's what it was, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we're still providing some of those same opportunities, and we're not just excluding a particular group when we cut this team, like, are we going to see a certain group that now, maybe they were the low end, and now they don't get an opportunity where they did with the four teams were able to play?
You know, I, I understand your question, I, it's, I guess at the end of the day, will there be some seventh and eighth grade young ladies in the soccer example who won't be on a team because they're cut, because they can't all make the mod 9? Yes. Probably double of middle-school young ladies will be cut from volleyball, so you have many more volleyball cuts that are going to be made, that same age group, same gender, so it's, it's where can we have the most, capitalize on the most participation?
So the idea would be that the seventh and eighth graders that want to play would be on the Modified 9 team?
Correct, yep. And the only reason why we would choose the Modified 9 rather than mod is for two reasons. One, kind of going back to your question, to make sure we have opponents to play in a league, some may choose Modified, some schools may choose Modified 9, so we want to make sure we have a full schedule, so that's. So that's one factor. The other factor is when you have modified nine, and again, we'll continue to use this, the girl, as an example, girls soccer. Well, obviously, being state finalists, our girls soccer program is elite. It's very, very strong. It's tough to make that team as, at a JV level for some ninth graders. So by giving them the flexibility of mod nine, we can still have some ninth graders that really show a lot of skill and a lot of potential, maybe haven't matured completely physically, gives them another year of being in the program to then, as, say, 10th graders beyond junior varsity.
If, if our girls soccer program is elite, why are we having a hard...
Great question.
Hard time recruiting?
It's a great question, and it's very common occurrence in female sports, particularly all around, not just in Bethlehem, not just in our league, and throughout the state. Young ladies tend to cut themselves if they, in their minds, feel that they can't compete at that level, so they don't come out for the team. Instead, what we are noticing, and again, we see shifts. We don't have any fewer students, not just young ladies, but young men as well, playing at, you know, playing sports. They're moving. They're going from soccers to volleyballs, as an example. We all of a sudden, we have 45, 46 young kids trying out for girls modified volleyball every year. We have currently one modified volleyball team. 25, 20, 25 of those kids are cut, whereas we have 17 coming out for soccer, you know, 13 coming out for soccer, where no cuts are obviously being made, but we're diluting that program and we're turning away many students playing something else. Same thing in the springtime with baseball and softball and the two lacrosse's. It's kind of, it's the same piece. We're not losing athletes. Participation is very steady. They're just picking, they're more interested in other sports currently. It's just kind of a shift.
I also had another question regarding what you said regarding the two to three sport athletes declining. You know, I've, I've read a lot of articles that say how important it is for athletes to participate in two or three sports in terms of reducing injuries, preventing burnout, and just increasing their skills in different ways. So I was wondering, what can we do to encourage multi-sport athletes?
That's a fantastic view that you have. You and I share that view. If you follow our school Twitter account, you'll see me constantly putting multi-sport articles up there. And for all the reasons you hit on, burnout, overuse, injuries, and I was a recruiting coordinator for Division One school for nine years. I recruited multi-sport athletes because they have more complete, comprehensive skillsets. Every sport works on a different skillset. So to answer your question, what we're really trying to do is to have coaches work with multiple programs. As an example, I have a football, we have a football coach in our program who just today agreed to take one of the vacant varsity assistant track and field positions. He's extremely knowledgeable in strength training, will be wonderful for our field athletes, and hopefully also work with our, you know, learn the sport more and more. But he's able to bring in football players, as an example. He can bring in track and field athletes, as an example, you know, vice versa. So that's one way, is to try to have more of our coaches be involved. They certainly don't need to be varsity coaches on both, that's very time-consuming. But to have just an involvement, trying to tie together. We have several programs that in the last two years do their strength and conditioning together. So soccer and lacrosse, both boys and girls, often will cross-train in the fall and in the spring together to try to get some of those relationships, kids getting to know other coaches they might normally not have, not have familiar with. Maybe they played when they were very young, youth, and then stopped that sport to focus on that piece. A lot of it has to do with the search for the athletic scholarship. And those of us who either have had children go through the process or have worked in the process, it's a minuscule number of students who receive athletic scholarships. Every, twice a year, November and May, you'll see, we'll have six, seven, eight, nine student athletes from our high school signing national letters of intent, which is outstanding. Some of it, of their financial package from their school is athletic money. The bulk of it is academic money. And, but I believe that parents who are not knowledgeable or who kind of are very tunnel with vision with that piece, feel that if my son plays baseball morning, noon, and night, 12 months a year, he's going to be really good. But you're right, they're missing the boat on that, because they're not going to want to play baseball when they're 11.
Right. So, you know, I just hope that our coaches and our administrators are all kind of encouraging that, like you said, they were. And if we can get, if we can get coaches to really encourage and explain the different types of skills that can be gained from other sports, and to parents as well who are, who may not understand the advantages of a second sport.
No, I agree with you. We, we talk about, you know, each season, we have a preseason meeting with our coaches. Just last week, we had our preseason spring meeting, and one of the items on the agenda is, every, every single season is not only, obviously, not to recruit other people's student athletes, but also to kind of, you know that you have an athlete in your program who may not be playing a sport in a certain season, encourage them to play, participate in something, even if it's something that they're not familiar with. If it's a wintertime and you're a football player or a soccer player, and you're a girls' tennis player in another part of the year, run into our track during the wintertime. That's a great way to keep your strength and conditioning up and be involved with things. So no, I wholeheartedly agree with you. Any questions?
I have another question. Can you provide the numbers just at a later time on the number of students who are currently on the girls soccer, the baseball and softball programs, and how many are on the volleyball, lacrosse, and girls lacrosse?
Sure.
Just to have those numbers?
Absolutely.
And then, how many girls are currently on the varsity soccer team? Do you know?
I believe it was around 16 was the roster this fall, 15, 16?
So I would look at that just a little bit to say, okay, so we're willing to add a varsity assistant soccer coach to a team that's really elite already, but yet we're looking to reduce opportunities for other girls to play soccer at that level.
Well, not at that level, just playing in high, in school level.
Playing in general, yeah. So for me personally, knowing that there's 16 kids on the varsity team, and we're reducing a girls soccer team and limiting the opportunities to 14 to 17 girls, I would, I would not like that personally. I think that the more opportunities we can provide, if we can, that's great. I don't think, based on these numbers here, that that makes sense to add the assistant soccer coach to the girls team when it doesn't appear at this point. If we have to choose, I would choose the other option.
The varsity assistant, though, in different programs provides different pieces. At the varsity level, right, the top echelon of high school sports...
Right.
It's a lot more of specialized instruction. One coach working can't work, obviously, with offense and defense at the same time. We have several, softball has a varsity assistant coach, and they have 15 kids on the team. Baseball has a varsity assistant coach, they have 18 or 19 athletes on the team. Field hockey has an assistant coach, and they're around 19 or 20. So the, at the varsity level, it's, it's not only just supervision of bodies, the varsity level, it's also specialized instruction.
And I understand that. We want to have the best coaches, the right training, but at the same time, just being a board member, I want to make sure we're providing the opportunities to those students who need them as well, and it is a trade-off. And I'm not sure that the trade-off is, is, you know, worth it, just because that's what it's done at a varsity level, doesn't make that that's what we have to do at every sport level. Maybe it's more needed in hockey versus varsity soccer. I don't know, I just seen the number, I want to see the number of students that we would be reducing by going from four to three in those programs.
Absolutely, I'll get you those numbers. It's been, like I said, it's been nearly a half decade of continuing to have very, very low numbers. And, and I want to just make sure that opportunities are there for every single, every single student in the seventh and the eighth grade in particular, as they move up. Every student athlete has the opportunity to come to, well, this is all the same conversation we had a couple of years ago. They all have the opportunity. Some students take advantage of it, and we see them increase their skill. Students who don't do any, it's just like playing an instrument. If you don't practice, you're not going to get better. Some students will just kind of show up at tryouts without putting in any additional work. The expectation that you're going to have increased skill is kind of an unfair one.
But we're looking at decreasing modified teams, so that's...
Because we have duplicates of them.
Right. So we have two, but that's when we really start grabbing some of the students that haven't already been playing from the time they were five, and not everybody needs to know what they're doing when they're five or six. Maybe they decide when they're in sixth or seventh grade, and I, I think it's our responsibility to help mentor that. And if we can have them playing at sixth and seventh grade, those opportunities, even if they don't...
Seventh and eighth grade, there's no sixth grade.
Seventh and eighth, they don't have, they may not have the opportunity at high school. We see that all the time, where middle schoolers take high school spots. And if we can still offer it at the middle school level, why, why wouldn't we do that? So I guess I would like just to see the numbers.
I will get you those numbers.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can I just go back to Len, the modified coach for indoor, or spring? The, I sent an email to the board because Len referenced the numbers this year of over 100, 120 students. So he proposed, he had this proposed for next year, but from a safety standpoint, I'd like if we could go ahead and put that in place to help the two, there's only two other coaches. So there's two coaches currently to expect them to instruct and supervise 120. Len met with them, and they felt like that works for them. But if you're okay with that, I'd like to add that for now, because we still have a 10-day posting requirement, and Len has to see if he can actually find a coach to do it. Okay. And then if he posts it tomorrow, then that would meet the 10 days, so we could approve that at the next meeting and get someone in place to help supervise the kids. So then that would essentially be adding it now, but was proposed for next year. I just need to know if you're okay with that? And then it'll be on the next agenda for the approval of the actual position and the appointment.
Yes, fine.
I'm in favor.
I am too. Okay, thanks.
I, I'm sorry, I have one question. You, there's a line item that you described as a default code, but I assume that you have a plan for it, so I was just curious.
Yes, we do. Additional field hockey cages, also lacrosse cages, especially if we do, you know, we do have those extra teams, we would need those, those goals. And field hockey cages are extremely expensive. They're about $1,900 each. That's $3,800 and four sets of goal cages. $5,000 goes very quickly in athletic equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Next up, we have our operations and maintenance budget proposal presented by our Director of Operations and Maintenance, Greg Nolte.
I'm going to raise the mic. Brittany, get me?
I think we need to just find the midpoint for the microphone.
Okay. Okay, well, welcome. As you may know, the operations and maintenance department is the cost center for a lot of district operations and a lot of the costs. Basically, everything that is involved with facilities, the utilities, custodial services, maintenance services, health and safety, all comes out of the operations and maintenance budget. The department also is presently managing the $32 million bond project, which is going to be underway very, very shortly. And we're also involved with the development of the 2.1 megawatt solar array project. So as I go through these, feel free to stop me if you have questions. Okay, I'm going to start at the bottom. Basically, I proposed basically a flat budget when compared to the 2018, 19 budget. Salaries for 1920, you'll see a decrease. That's primarily because we had quite a bit of tenured employees retire. That number also includes contractual salaries as well. Equipment and vehicles and special projects, you'll see reductions there, but I'm going to talk about them on some later slides, and I'll detail those as well. Utility costs, you'll see an increase of about $25,000. Most of that increase is because of natural gas. We get these letters from National Grid saying, yeah, by the way, you're probably going to see some increases in your transmission and your delivery costs. Not that they can give us what that number is, but that you can probably expect that. So I included about $20,000 on my, my $200,000 budget for natural gas. All the utilities, electric, communications for the district, and water pretty much stayed about the same. Contractual services increased about $40,000, and that's for, primarily for professional services because of the work that we're going to have to do next year with creating our next building condition survey and our five-year facilities plan. So that's pretty much the reason for, for that, that increase. Custodial maintenance, you'll see, that has about 13 different accounts in it that we look at individually, and it had a minor increase there. But overall, I think a very positive budget for, for 1920.
Greg, when, when will we see benefits from the solar that we are investing in?
We expect to be online by the, the summer.
June 1st.
June 1st.
So is that taken into consideration here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we also with the survey where heating is uncomfortable, are we including an increase for possibly turning it up to 100 degrees?
Yeah, so I will speak to that in a later slide. Yeah, we are doing, actually Judy and I are presently working with our developer, our solar developer, to identify exactly what the impacts to that, that solar array is, is going to be, that 20-year PPA, that power purchase agreement. Okay, so I'm sure we'll report at a later time once we, once we finalize those numbers. Thank you. Positions in the district, at least at O&amp;M, hasn't changed. We're, we're holding steady at 58, the same as the past number of years. You see a decrease in the value for the budget for custodians, and that's because of those retirees that we were experiencing. I'll just mention overtime. Overtime is made up of three different types of accounts, one being use of facilities and school facilities. That remained the same. I did increase maintenance and custodial overtime by about $3,000 to about $32,000, and that's primarily because of the upcoming bond activities. My staff is usually a lot more active getting schools ready, especially, you know, towards the end of the summer and that type of stuff. So basically, all overtime is tracked by hour. I know where every penny goes and, and what it is used for as well. Equipment and vehicles. This is the third year that I am decreasing this category. In 1819, it was about $200,000, and we're proposing about $160,000 for, for this year. I think operationally that we're seeing the benefits of what we've been doing in this multi-year approach of replacing older vehicles, older equipment with, with new stuff, so we're not having really the repair costs to this equipment like we have in years past. As you'll hear about later, with the recommendation of our capital outlay project, I'm proposing a replacement of one of the bus lifts at Transportation. The overall cost of that lift, however, is about $178,000. So with the capital outlay, you'll see the, the difference up there at the top line item basically being that share. There has been some talk at the state level about increasing capital outlay or the, the value of that, because when you get into it, $100,000 actually doesn't go very far, but there's been minimal talks and nothing on the horizon yet. So we are standing, standing steady at 100 grand as far as that goes. Special projects. We also decreased this from $134,000 the previous year. Basically, how do we identify projects year to year? We are periodically meeting with principals. We, a number of my staff, we conduct facility inspections. Any staff member in the district can submit work orders through our maintenance direct system. Um, any staff member in the district, uh, can submit, uh, work orders, uh, through our maintenance direct system. And from all this input, we kinda create different lists. Um, some of them we can, uh, complete in-house, um, some we put into operating budgets like you're seeing here. Um, larger ones, we start putting into capital outlay and even larger ones, uh, may go into a bond. But basically, we're trying to accommodate as many requests as possible. Um, you'll see a couple of projects here, uh, that we're gonna be improving security in the district, uh, with hardening some entrances uh, and, um, replacing some door locks with these quick, uh, push-button locks. Um, figured we have to start someplace, um, so I think we have a plan there. Um, you're, you'll also see, uh, some window film installations on the D2 wing primarily upstairs uh, to hopefully minimize, uh, solar gain, uh, in those classrooms and we'll, we'll be judging the effectiveness of that. So those are the projects. I have one addition that, uh, I'd like to talk about and that's basically creating an account for classroom furniture replacements. This is the, the first year of a dedicated funding, uh, source, uh, for basically replacing classroom furniture. Uh, previously furniture was replaced on larger, larger scale capital projects. Um, when we would build classrooms, we were allowed to basically, um, stock them with, with furniture. Um, we also would use, uh, per pupil, uh, allocations at the building levels, uh, but that necessarily didn't go extremely far. Um, so furniture is not, um, uh, adable, um, from a, from a building standpoint. Uh, and it really hasn't been a priority in, in budgets of years past. After many years of, uh, making do, um, we'd like to basically start a systematic, uh, or systematically start approaching, um, replacing, uh, classroom furniture. Uh, we would probably start with the oldest and the poorest conditions first and then kinda move on from there. So, um, we anticipate that this funding source, we would have, uh, year to year and essentially, basically, um, putting it as part of our baseline budget.
How much, oh, how much does furniture cost? Like, I'm wondering what fifty thousand dollars gets?
Yeah, so to give you a level of, of magnitude, um, outfitting a classroom, say, with about thirty desks, thirty chairs, uh, is about thirty-five hundred dollars. So with fifty thousand dollars, you could maybe do about fifteen classrooms, standard, okay? But what we're-
Does, does alternative seating cost more?
Yeah, so, so we actually had a meeting today and then what we're seeing is, and what we've designed, uh, with the bond project is, is more flexible space, different types of furniture. Um, uh, we've had a lot of conversations about, um, what will the classroom of the future look like, um, and looking at that furniture. So we basically have, uh, formed a committee of principals, superintendent, uh, teachers to identify these priorities and to, to start investigating this. Um, we're looking at the flexible seating and the flexible furniture and that may influence what we purchase in, in, in future years. Uh, but we are looking for consistency amongst the buildings. We weren't looking to do this, uh, by, by teacher preference. Um, so, um, that is something that we're starting. Um, there'll be a lot more conversation on that.
Greg, I'd like to recommend to the board that we consider increasing this amount. I think we've all been in enough classrooms to realize that a lot of our furniture is getting pretty ragged. I would suggest that we consider increasing it for this year to a hundred thousand and then stepping it down in subsequent years, maybe over the next two or three years, back down to fifty thousand. Uh, I just think there's enough of a need for the furniture that, uh, and it's a small expenditure. I don't know if you wanna talk about it now or after Greg's done with his presentation?
I don't think I have enough information to say that I would wanna increase it to a hundred thousand just because the administrators have talked about it and they felt that fifty thousand was sufficient to address it for maybe a start this year, maybe get a better hold on what our needs are.
Well, we have, we have an inventory of our needs. The fifty thousand is not going.
I'm sure it's a drop in the bucket, yes.
Right. But we also wanted to be mindful of what we're requesting. So we put fifty thousand dollars thinking that over time, you know, if you had that in your, our budget every year, we'd have a dedicated amount that we could expend. Um, I mean, to Mike's point, if we had more to start and replace more furniture, that'd be great. Uh, but whatever we can allocate from year to year is really what, we're looking for a consistent amount that we can plan on. So we're not trying to, oh, we have a few thousand extra, we can buy this. Um, and we end up with, um, furniture that's falling apart and kids falling down because the desks actually collapse. Things like that, we don't really want to happen.
We can't use the capital reserve for that, right?
No.
Any money that's in there could not be a one-time.
Well, the capital reserve has to be something that's a capital-atable amount. It's typically building projects and larger and these furniture items don't fall in that category.
I would like, take your request and put it in the same category as the one with the Chromebooks. It's something that I would definitely look at and consider once I had the final numbers-
The full budget.
And the big picture, because you're right, you know, I mean, furniture is insanely expensive, you know, the, I know North Colony did like twenty rooms of flexible seating and it was over six figures. You know, so it, it, it adds up real quickly. So, I, I love the idea of the account just because it's something that you, you know, can put off and put off and put off and then realize all your desks are from nineteen seventy-two and, and-
Older.
Yeah, and so I, I love the idea of a starting point and then maybe at the end of the discussions we have over the budget, we can look where we are and increase that number if possible.
And you said you would like to do it by building or were you just, did you say classrooms? Like, you would just select the cla- I thought you said buildings.
By need.
By what?
By need.
By need?
Yeah.
We would book K-12 because there's some, for example, Eagle doesn't have a lot of old furniture, obviously. But we do have a lot of requests, um, from teachers to have more flexibility in what they have available to them. So we have, you know, a lot of makeshift things now. So we would like to obviously look at the greatest needs, replace that first, determine what makes the most sense district-wide, but then, um, be able to provide some of that flexible seating, um, to, to teachers when they wanna.
Is that most of the elementary schools are requesting the flexible seating or everywhere?
Middle and high school, I think, yeah.
Yeah, we've been seeing lots of changes, uh, instead of going with traditional desks, they're going with tables, uh, for the students to sit around. Um, I just happened to be at Eagle and they had all different seating arrangements of different things you can sit on. You know, the, the saucer, the balls, the, uh, mushroom units, uh, standing desks. Uh, we actually purchased a couple, um, last year and distributed them around the, the elementary schools. I believe that kids are fighting over them.
Do you have what classrooms or what needs you have immediately? Like, if you were to look at all of the classrooms, would you be able to say, I know twenty-five rooms are in dire need?
Uh, the principals have the rooms or the, yeah, they have the rooms that are, have the oldest furniture, if that's what you're referencing.
Yeah, I would be interested to see how old the furniture is and how many classrooms are in need of significant furniture that, as a board, we're not aware of. And I think that we could-
And what it would cost too.
And what it would cost. I think it'd be important for us to make a informed decision to have that information.
Because I'm guessing a lot of the furniture was probably bought when whatever wing was added. So if your wing was added in nineteen sixty-eight, you have nineteen sixty-eight furniture. If your wing was added in nineteen eighty-
Well, it might be nineteen fifty.
Yeah, I don't think we're that bad, um, because we did purchase with building allocation monies year to year. Um, and we do try to purge and try to get rid of most of the stuff. And we are sharing a lot more amongst schools, uh, than we ever have before. But, um, yeah, I think it'd be relatively easy to come up with the overall need and, and that would be with a direct replacement, just desk and chair. But I, I think what you're gonna see, at least at the elementary level, actually at all levels, I, I don't know if that's where the committee is going, wanting to be a little more flexible, you know, a little bit different. And I don't think that they know yet. So we're gonna be, the thought was is to, to get with our architects who are designing other schools, you know, what is going on in the, the industry now, get with some vendors that they might recommend that have, you know, some good quality furniture, uh, see what they're recommending, get it to the group, uh, because sometimes you get these things and, and they're just, they're just not what you were thinking. And boy, the balls were just horrible because the kids, the kids were kicking around or not good at the elementary, but maybe high school, middle school, so.
And then I guess this would be a question for Judy. Would this be something we would wanna finance because the, the lifespan of furniture is probably greater than a Chromebook? So if we loaned it, the debt would be paid off in a relatively short period of time to do more upfront since it seems to be something that teachers want and it seems to be a need now for the flexible seating. It seems the students really like it.
I think-
This amount is relatively low though. I would never recommend that you finance-
No, I'm not talking-
So if you're, you're talking about a million dollars of furniture, then we would be talking about borrowing for that.
Don't we, I mean, at this point, Greg, it seems like you're still exploring what it is you wanna do with these various rooms and this is sort of a, a fund to start seeing, to, to build a fund so that we have money when we decide what it is that we need. So as a starting point, I don't have a problem with the amount. If you were to come back to us and say, uh, before the budget process is over and say, you know, we really think, um, seven, fifty isn't gonna do it, seventy-five is better or sixty or, or whatever. I mean, at that point, I think we could consider it. But without having a specific plan and you're just looking for a fund, I think I'd be comfortable where we are now. But I, I'm open to considering, um, where we are at the end of the process.
Okay.
We can certainly get you at least the most immediate needs, if that's what-
Yeah.
In what the overall, if you were just to replace desk for desk, what the cost would be. I think to Chris's point, when you get into some of the different options, it might be a little more costly than just a traditional desk and chair, but it'd be some indication of the amount.
At least the base need?
Yep.
And, and as, in regards to the fifty thousand or if it was seventy-five or a hundred, I, I think it's a great idea, especially if you're gonna play around with maybe the type of flexible seating in certain areas to see how it works. And then maybe for the next year, look at, maybe it's a larger scope that we undertake if we know that it's working well in the classrooms and then present it to the board. And that's what I was talking about in regards, maybe it's a high, maybe it's five hundred thousand, but it's something that we could finance and it's gonna take care of itself for what, thirty years? How long these rooms last?
Fifty.
Fifty, of course. So it might be an idea.
Um, I, I remember at the beginning of the year, or maybe it was last year, we were all, we were concerned about, would state and whatever federal dollars come in, would remain? And whether some of it would be pulled? And while I like the idea of some of the funds that we're putting together, so, say, for Chromebooks on a regular basis to keep buying them, furniture, et cetera, I think we also have to be mindful of the fact that this funding, the funding streams are not stable. And while we hope that the state continues to fund us at the same level and whatever federal dollars we collect are also at the same level, there's no guarantee. And my concern is that as we keep adding, that we not put ourselves in a position where we were many years ago where, um, Mike, when he was the supervisor, you know, instead of building, which is what he wanted to do, had to keep deconstructing.
Yeah.
And I think it's just something we need as a board to be mindful of as we go forward.
Right.
Agreed.
Okay.
Can I ask a different question?
Yep.
About the quick action lockdown locks, which makes me nauseous. Is that, um, based on a state ed recommendation or requirement or just something we decided?
It actually came up through some safety meetings that we had with some of the buildings. Um, right now, um, you need a key to lock your classroom door. And there's been studies and working with BOCs. If, if, if you have a situation going on and you gotta go in your jacket and get your key and you hear things and then for you to get the right key and drop keys to, to lock your door, you know, so you can go to lockdown, um, it was thought to be, um, much more effective to, to go with this push-button type system.
So is the thought that we would do twenty-five classrooms this budget and then another?
Yeah, and, and again, those were budgetary figures. If we're gonna buy in bulk, uh, we're looking at different options. We've met with some vendors already. Um, there's different, more cheaper, uh, ways, uh, or lock sets that we could use, which just means that we would do more and more classrooms.
Are the, are classroom doors in general solid or do they have windows? And I'm asking this because I'm, I, I've seen some both ways and I'm wondering, what, what do we have as an inventory?
Mostly windows.
Yeah, so most, most are, are wood and they have what they call like a quarter light-
Okay.
Which is a window, which is actually a requirement of SED. And on every, on, on every one of those, we, we have purchased security shades that basically, in the event of a lockdown, you just, you get, unzip this little Velcro and it slides down and basically you can't see in.
Okay, you can't see in, but can they break in? I mean, what kind of glass is it? And because, you, you know, you have this wonderful button you push or whatever, however the mechanism works, what do you need to unlock it? Because if somebody takes, you know, a, a two-by-four or sledgehammer or, or whatever and goes through the glass, you know, they can open it up or whatever.
I think it's high enough that you can't-
Yeah, so-
Well, they can, although all of the safety training we've attended and all of the research has shown that the most effective way to deal with an, obviously, an intruder emergency situation is to have locked door, no visibility, that there's never been in any mass shooting, not just in schools. Um, typically, the shooter just goes to the next, they want the quick, easy access-
The easiest place, yeah.
Because they know that they have very limited time. So a locked door has been the most, uh, safeguard, I guess, against, yeah.
And this is the fa- and what you're saying is this is the fastest way to get those doors locked?
Correct. And i- in addition to, to locking, uh, this year, we actually purchased door wedges. Okay, which should only be used during a lockdown. So, um, although history doesn't say that you're gonna smash through the window and reach in and open it, uh, now you have a door wedge at the bottom that you're not gonna be able to reach that is jammed in there. It just provides another layer of, uh, security. And that was, that, that came up through a lot of our security team meetings. So that was another very positive added security purchase for us.
And rather cheap, I might add.
Yeah, it's amazing all the different door wedges out there. Okay. Um, the nineteen twenty capital outlay, uh, project, as I mentioned earlier, is a replacement of a lift that is, uh, failing, uh, at transportation. Uh, this lift is about eighteen years old. Um, this lift, if you can see right here, this front piston actually moves forward and backwards and that gives the mechanics the ability to work on different sized buses. Uh, right now, that range is, is limited because of the walls, uh, of, of this metal framing that have basically failed and are pushing in a little bit. So that piston cannot go all the way back, um, so basically you can't work on the smaller buses here. So, um, like I said, it's, uh, about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, there is a lift right next to it, uh, put in, uh, basically at the same time. Um, that, it's possible that, uh, next year's capital outlay might be a request to, uh, uh, replace that as well. So on the capital outlay, for those of you that don't know, um, SED allows qualifying small projects, you know, through, uh, the general fund. Basically, we get aid from that the following year and I think we get about, probably about sixty-eight thousand on aid the following year. Okay? So I, I, I wanted to talk about, um, and follow up on the district, uh, survey uh, and, uh, things that, that the O and M department is, is working on to address the reported concerns and to increase our, our customer service to, uh, community, teachers and, um, and staff. Um, so a- as much as O and M this year, um, probably more so than any, has been, uh, proactive with our inspections and our, our communications with principals, um, I, I think that we need to promote our, um, uh, services and our support better. Um, I've been working with our communications office, um, basically to create a, a flyer that would reintroduce, um, O and M to a lot of the teachers and, and the staff members. Um, this flyer, uh, would identify, um- the staff members. This flyer would identify where to go, what to do, where to report, any, anything related to facilities. So a lack of heat, smells, safety concerns, cleanliness concerns, anything like that. You know, it's hard for us to fix things that we don't know about, and, you know, we have a lot of eyes out there, and, and, you know, all the more eyes, you know, are, basically, is not going, is not going to hurt us in any way. So, you know, the other thing, too, is that we are continuously having new staff in this district, and if they came from another district, they may not know where to go. So my plan is to include this, or to send this out in the next couple of weeks, once, once we get this finalized. What we also included in this, and I, I don't expect you to, to read this, but I will provide you a copy of it, is a little narrative on classroom heat and ventilation, and how that system works, and SED's requirement for this constant flow of fresh air into your classrooms, okay? I can't tell you how many calls I have gotten to say, you know, my, my unit's just blowing, it's blowing cold air, you know, is there anything that you can do about it? And basically, once I explain it, they, they kind of understand that. So hopefully, that bottom part will, we've sent these things out before. More narrative, I'm not sure how many people have read them, but hopefully, this, this, this will help. So part of the survey, classroom heat. And actually, I was kind of surprised by this, this survey comment about classrooms, in part because our, our phone has been relatively quiet. If you recall, some of you may recall, in fall of 2017, the district did raise the, the set point from 68 degrees to 69, 70 degrees. And I, I think that helped out tremendously. When we get calls, and we do get calls 99.99% of the times, there is a problem with the, the teachers or, or the staff's unit. There's something mechanically broken in it. So we go and fix it. I, I, I have not been out at all to say, teacher, your room is at the district's set point, and yeah, if you're cold, sorry about it. It, it just hasn't happened. So that's why I was kind of surprised at some of the comments. So we are working with principals, you know, to, to let us know if they hear things. Hopefully, with this flyer, if people have any concerns, they, they can get to us on that. So we'll see. The, I'm sorry, in addition to, we have a great energy management system that operates the, the whole heating system and the air conditioning system. It's got a lot of bells and whistles on it. So I have staff that, that look at things. The custodial staff looks at things to make sure that the building is heating up, and to see if there are any classrooms with any issues. So just, again, trying to be a little more proactive with things. So that was that. The survey also had some comments and concerns about bathroom cleanliness. I've discussed this at our monthly custodial staff meetings. I've asked principals that if they see things, if they have, if they hear any comments from teachers or staff to let me know. I think a lot of the comments were about high school, and another school, and, and maybe Slingerlands. And those older bathrooms are actually already slated to be renovated as part of the bond project. So is it old fixtures that people were, you know, complaining about? But, so either way, I think we have something in place to address those, those concerns.
On the temperature issues, what about the cooling piece of it? So the rooms that are too hot?
You, you, this is great segue into my, my last part. Okay, so the last item I wanted to present on and talk about was the classroom temperature assessment initiative, okay? And this was pretty much during hot days. Last, the board's direction, last budget cycle, O and M established pedestal fans and ceiling fans in six classrooms at the high school and the middle school, okay? Just to see the effectiveness of, of fans in classrooms. During the fall of 2018, we had some hot days, we collected temperature data, okay? But basically, the feedback so far from the teachers in those rooms, and other ones that have visited those rooms, has kind of been uninspiring, if that's the right word. There's been really no solid convictions of the effectiveness of the fans.
That's the word I'm looking for.
Uninspiring, the wrong word?
Definitive is the word you're looking for.
No really significant benefit can be at least identified at this point. Some of the comments, the fans just circulate the hot air, so it's not really noticeable. The fan is large, takes up space. The noise from the fan was okay for some activities, but sometimes I had to turn it off. So I think there's more to come on this. We're going to continue to monitor the impacts and the effectiveness of this initiative. As I talked about earlier, I did include some window film that may help with solar gain, but we'll see. So.
Greg, how many, we didn't have a lot of really hot days in the fall, did we?
No.
Yeah.
No, they were maybe more humid.
Yeah.
More humid than hot.
Spring, maybe we'll get more information.
So basically, you know, our goal is to be, I guess, improve customer service, comfort, be as proactive and as reactive as possible to facility needs, so.
And you're going to continue gathering data through the spring, right?
Yes.
Back to the, the heat. So from the survey, was it just staff, or was it staff and students was feeling?
With staff and students.
So they both were indicating?
It was all, it's very consistent.
They were both very cold, it seemed like.
It was cold. There were more comments, I believe, about the hot days in general, but the heating and cooling, that was actually a question. So the responses were very consistent for students and staff.
So my question is, so we raised it to 69, and we did the survey, and the survey's coming back from both cohorts, saying we're still not feeling comfortable. Are we looking to think maybe to add a degree, which is where I was going with, if we add a degree, what does it do for the budget to kind of meet that need that was indicated in the survey?
I've had quite a bit of teachers call me to say that the rooms are too hot, too. So, I mean.
During the winter?
Yeah. Again, some of them were mechanical issues, stuck valves.
How many, do we know the number of people who took the survey? And, I mean, are we doing it by an individual room basis? Or I, how would you do, you would do it with the building temperature?
Yeah, so as complaints, as, as complaints come in.
Yeah, you can do it by individual rooms.
Okay.
So as complaints come in, and we're, we're addressing those. And, and I mean, to be honest, rooms are, are different depending upon where they are. If you're a corner room.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, that's 69, 70, I'm not going to tell you. And just with where the thermostat is, means something, okay? Within the room, if it's on a cold wall. So we do have some set points that might be 71, 72, okay? So.
I'm just thinking, is there a way to address that more specifically, to get information for the classroom, to find out, like, who's really having issues?
Well, I think, I think doing this to staff, and asking principals to, and actually, I'm going to all the buildings and doing a presentation on the strategic plan and the climate survey, and bringing this up, that a lot of times, people don't report it. You know, I'm cold, and they don't know, they don't say anything. So if they say something, and they either contact O and M directly, or go to the principal, then we'll follow up, and Greg's staff can look to see if, in fact, that room needs to be adjusted, because it can be adjusted individually. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we took the second step. So I guess some people are hot, some people are cold, it's very subjective.
Right.
But the survey was saying that there's an issue. So how are we addressing it to make sure if they feel that they need, you know, to be warmer, that they can call and get that done? Or even students, for that matter, since it was across the board, what are we doing for the students who, who are complaining that they're cold, too? Like, what's the mechanism for them to be able to say, look, I'm cold every day when I come to school, and see if that's a theme in the room? Maybe the teacher doesn't say anything, because they just don't, you know, they're the type of person that doesn't say anything. But maybe the whole class is cold.
So I, I actually, I yell at teachers for not, not telling me about things. You know, if you're cold, tell me about this, because there might be something wrong in your classroom. You're not bothering us, this is why we're here, okay? So I know one thing that we've done a lot better this year is weekend and, and night activities. There was a time that we can come, everything gets shut down. We have basketball practice, and it's 55 degrees in the gym. We heard about it. So we've gotten a lot better with accommodating those, because, you know, we're doing okay with utilities. So, you know, I, I think what we could do, and without we expand upon this, is, you know, students should maybe talk to their teachers, and then teachers can, can easily just send me an email, or...
Is there a difference where the thermostat is on the, the height of the wall, where it is on relative to the height of, of, from the floor? In other words, in an elementary school, are the thermostats lower, because the students are shorter? No, I know, I, I mean, this is, this is.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a really great question.
You would think they'd put it higher, so they couldn't reach it.
Well, in, in a way, that could be. Now, my wife is four foot 10, and she has little kids in K through five, and her room is often very cold, especially if she wants the kids who often want to sit on the floor. And that's, during the winter, it's rare that they're going to be sitting on the floor in, in that particular room. Now, I think that if, you know, the thermostat is at the same height in all the schools, maybe we want to take a look at that, as we're redoing, you know, heating, air conditioning, things like that. Because it does make a difference. And one day, she did call and complain. Custodian came in, put the thermostat, you know, put the, the thermometer, whatever heat device he used for the temperature. He says, well, right here, it's such a temperature. And she's looking up at him and saying, yeah, that's up there, but I'm down here, and my kids are down here. And I think that's something that sometimes we might miss in this discussion.
Right.
So we actually have a, a very defined protocol as far as how you check temperatures. And you're right, if the thermostat is in the middle of the room, if it's up high, if it's on an exterior wall, and that wall's cold, the ceiling is different than mid, is different than the floor, is different than the window wall, is different where the unit ventilator is. So yes, you're saying all, yes, there are differences. And that's why we're trying to accommodate. You know, I, I think maybe it would be a good idea to, to get with the principals, and just if there are concerns. I'm not sure if they would survey their staff specifically, because we can look at this individually by room, it doesn't have to be globally. I, I think we just, I just need to know somehow, and maybe this flyer will, will spark some of that. So if you're really unhappy, call us, all right, and see what we can do.
Are you going to, like, I'm sure tech, they track the help desk calls. Do you track, you track the help desk calls? Would you track the incoming calls, like, see how many service requests you're getting? So that would be information, maybe, that the board or whoever can see, like, you know what, maybe it is a problem?
Yeah.
I think, because you just said, like, oh, teachers call me, say they're hot, or they're too cold. It would be good information to have, because it's on the, the survey. And I think that's really, data's the only way to really know.
Yeah. So we, through our work order system, we track work orders by trade and by, by issue. Something like this, I, I wouldn't want somebody to submit a work order. Call us, okay? Because work orders, they go into the system, you got to get in your, so just call us, and then we can.
No, it doesn't have to be a system thing, but it could be, you know, a little.
But yeah, we could, we could start tracking those calls, easily.
I don't know what the other board member thinks. I, I'm thinking of it as.
But not only tracking the calls, but tracking the result. In other words, what, what was the problem? What did you do? So that, you know, there's a comprehensive data trail.
That's very easy to do.
Thank you.
Can teachers in all the buildings open their windows on hot days?
Do they?
Can they?
Yes.
Okay. Because I heard there was an issue with the new windows at Elsmere, when they got new windows, that some of the teachers weren't able to open them.
Yeah. So on the second level, there's actually stops that only allow windows to open so far, because we didn't want any, any.
For safety concerns. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that provide enough airflow, however?
Well, they had three, three sets of windows in their classroom, yeah. So, yeah. Okay, so at this point, I'll turn it to Judy. She's going to talk about the capital reserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which leaves me five minutes before the nine o'clock witching hour for the participation in government students. So I promised to be very, very quick. We had talked at the very initial meeting about some concerns that we had with the proposed governor's budget plan, where he might be re-diverting the money for capital projects, removing some of that 10% incentive aid. This coupled with the fact that our current capital reserve is almost maxed out. We had adopted that several years ago with a $10 million cap, and we are about $600,000 away from hitting that cap. So it is a wonderful tool, because we will continue to have a stream of capital projects. Everything has a useful life and wears out over time. So it is our recommendation that the board would authorize the creation of another capital reserve. Similarly, we would want to put a 10-year life on it, and a maximum of $10 million. The board's approval is needed to both create the reserve, and to subsequently spend any money out of the reserve. In addition to board approval, we also need to put up the creation, and any subsequent expenditures have to appear as a proposition in the May budget vote. So there are a lot of statutory limitations on how we use that. It has to be used for a capital purpose, and only a capital purpose. So it has been a good tool for us, and for those reasons, we're recommending that we create another one. And if that is something that you concur with, we would put this as a separate resolution at a subsequent board meeting to approve this. And then it would also appear within the legal ad that we adopt, along with all of the other required propositions.
Judy, can you just clarify, the current capital reserve, you said, is almost at max. So we can't continue to contribute to that, even though money is being spent from that for the upcoming bond, right?
Correct. It's not like a revolving loan fund, so to speak. So we can only transfer in up to $10 million. So we did get approval to spend down the 4.6, 4.9 million dollars as a funding source in this $32 million project. So even though we will reduce it, we still can't replace it with additional monies.
And if it has a 10-year life, what happens at the end of its life? If, I mean, I assume we'll use the money before the end of the life, right?
We would use it. Yes.
Is 10 million the max on a capital reserve?
We felt that 10 million was a reasonable amount for the projects, again, knowing that we would have a specified life. I don't believe there's an actual statutory limit on that, but in speaking with our attorneys, that was the recommended.
So my question is, if we know that we hit, how long have we had this capital reserve? Four years now?
I believe it's been at least four, possibly five.
So if we know that we're hitting.
It was 2015, so four, yeah.
Four. So we're hitting the 10 million in four years. Would it make sense to make the next capital reserve 20, so we don't have to do this again, if it looks like we're putting in close to 2 million a year?
Or, or does that make it more difficult to pass it?
I don't know.
And you have to expend it, has to be expended within 10 years?
Within the 10-year allotment as well.
See, that, I, I think if you have to spend it within that short allotment, unless we have a plan, long-term going forward, that would sort of guarantee we would spend it, I think it's a little risky. Because, did you say we lose it?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, we don't lose it.
No, we don't lose it.
I'm just, because we're just, if we hit it again, if we're putting roughly about 2 million a year, we end up putting in the capital reserve like clockwork, why not make it 20 million, so we have one fund, we don't have to have two separate funds. And once this one's used up, we'll just have the next one, and we won't have to have two ongoing at the same time. It's just my thought. It made sense to me, but.
As the financial officer, how do you feel about that?
Well, I, we have been funding it closer to $2 million a year, but recall, when we developed this budget, we really tightened back some of those budget assumptions. So I don't know that we'll continue to see it at that level. I think the 10 million is a very reasonable amount, so.
Either way, I don't think it makes a difference.
I don't know that we're going to get there as quickly going forward, would be my sense.
Is the board comfortable with having that on as a resolution?
I am, yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And also, on the ballot will be two seats for the Board of Election. Mr. Cooper sadly has announced that he will not be running again, so that's one vacancy for the board seats, but petitions are available and are due back by April 22nd. And Brittany Barrett can give those out to anybody who is interested in running for the board. And then, our next meeting will be March 20th and that will be the big meeting where we will have Dave Hurst presenting on the instructional staffing and programming. And then, Kathy Johnston will speak on special ed and student services. And then, from there, hopefully, the following meeting, we will be close to adoption of the budget and then all leading up to the public hearing and then, of course, the budget vote on May 22nd. So, thank you. That is it for tonight.
Okay, we'll take a break right now so the PIIC students can come and sign out. Again, if you have paperwork that you need signed, see any of the board members. So, we'll take just a few minutes. Agenda item, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Hello, my name is Bill Davis, Delmar, New York. I have three, well, two kids in the district. My son just graduated last year and is at Genesee. I just had a brief comment about one of the policies. Policy 1500, public use of school facilities. As an active community member, it's hard to find space. And I noticed that in the policy, it was changed to 90 days' notice to use facilities. And I didn't look at too many other districts, but I did find South County says 30 days or prefers 30 days, but allows two weeks' notice. So, I just wanted to give some feedback that, you know, maybe prefer 60 days and 30 days, I don't know. I just, I just thought 90 days' notice seemed to be quite a bit. Again, I defer to the reasons why you have that policy, but, you know, for the town parks and for the library, there's, there's apps to be able to go and schedule space and all that. And a lot of it's, a lot of the space is used in the evening, so, you know, it can be a challenge to find space. And also, another area that I've thought about bringing up in the past, but I haven't, but I have more reason now, so another policy issue. I was looking through and I didn't see just a general high-level transportation policy issue. The area where I've seen it affect matters the most is for, from my experience, has been indoor and outdoor track or cross-country when you have a very small group of athletes who are trying to get a time or get recognition for being a national or state caliber team to get to, say, a larger cross-country meet or to get a better seat position for indoor and outdoor track. But, I mean, normally, you wouldn't bring the entire team to that type of meet and it's more of like an add-on, but the challenge with that is how to get those few athletes to that meet, because you don't want to use a big school bus. So, my understanding is that currently, a coach can't rent a vehicle and put a few athletes into the vehicle to bring them to that particular meet. But, I noticed there's no transportation policy that allows a clear way for parents to sign off saying they're okay with that. I know there's policies where parents can sign saying it's okay for someone to bring someone home for your own kid, but it's, I just noticed since there's, there's been a recent run on looking at policies that there's, there's no transportation policy and that's just, so I was like, you know what, it's timely to just, to bring it up and if that's, I know it's not in the grand scheme of things, not the biggest issue of the world, but, and for the athletes who are trying to hit times for a meet to get a better heat or something like that, it's, it means something to them. And I think it helps with the relationship between the coaches and the athletic director to have a clear policy in the area as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I do know, I do know that when Ben was running track, when they went to meets, whether it was the National Indoor Meet in the City, they were all transported by parents and.
It depends on, right.
They were on their own, basically.
We would not, I mean, I, I'm just pretty sure that NISA and the Teachers Union would not recommend, nor would our own attorneys, that our, our coaches drive students.
Right, there's a liability issue, I understand.
But, for us, the transport, I think, is that where you were going with that?
Basically, the parents were transporting, were transporting the kids. And, you know, sometimes I would do it, sometimes another parent would do it, but it was, it was on us to get our kids to the meet. I think that it's a reasonable, it's reasonable that we look at this.
I, I would agree with that. I would think that we would want to look at some of those and have some discussion on that. I mean, I know even with, like, the tennis team, they do practices at Tri-City or sport time because there's conflict sometimes with the gym space with modified sports starting and the parents have to drive the kids to a practice off hours or whatnot. And I know sometimes we accommodate certain things and then other times we don't accommodate transportation. So, I think it would be helpful to look at it just from that perspective.
Well, some of the track things, I think, I'm going to have to double check with Lynn, are what are meets that our team participates in the, some of the other things, like you're referencing, are more specialty, where only certain students go.
Yeah, I mean, National Indoor, I think there were five students from Bethlehem that went.
Right.
So, you know, you don't want a giant bus doing that.
Right.
And, you know, a parent is reasonable. On the other hand, he only made it because my job at the time allowed me that kind of flexibility.
Sure, yeah.
So, you know, I don't want, I'm not sure that that should be the criteria.
Yeah, yeah. And we have smaller buses.
Right, and there are times, like, we've taken film students, I believe, so, didn't we take them to Pennsylvania when they got the film order? Was it, was it the parents drive that?
I can't remember how they got there.
For some reason, I thought it was busing. But, I believe there are times when we do certain accommodations, but it'd be good for, I think, a discussion at least at a minimum.
Something to look into.
Yeah, I was going to, I could find it.
Probably talk about it in another policy committee meeting.
I think we have a meeting, right, coming up at the end of March, you know.
And then, the facility time, may I speak to that, please?
Yes, I think that 90 days is a lot. The policy requests 90 days' advance notice because that gives us the better ability to plan the space, but if you request something less than 90 days, we will always, if we have the space available, even if it's, you know, two weeks in advance, if it's available, we will accommodate that, so. Not to worry.
Should, should the policy be amended to reflect that? I'm just reading it right now and it says, all school, school groups are required to submit a schedule.
Just as a point of order, can we wait for this until we get to?
Of course.
That section?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on an agenda item? Okay. Let's see. Finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through five.
So moved.
Second.
I want to thank the donors, obviously, but is there any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Professional personnel action items, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through three.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes. Support personnel action items, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
Point of order.
Okay.
I'd like to separate out, to isolate, policy 2160, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics, so that as, so that we can reconsider the language in the current version.
Okay. Okay, so.
Or in the proposed version, I should say.
And also, are we planning on taking out policy 1500 to look at some of the language that we were just discussing?
Well, I was, during discussion, I was going to ask for that.
Okay.
But, I want to get there first.
Okay, so, we'll remove 2160 from the list of policies under consideration. Is there any discussion otherwise?
Yes, Meredith, why don't you go first?
Just regarding what we were discussing.
Can we, could we pull up the policy on the, is that possible?
Policy 1500?
Where is that in the policy, Meredith?
Under conditions of use for district facilities, heading B.
Okay.
All school groups are required to submit a schedule for the use of school facilities at least 90 days in advance of the planned activity. It doesn't indicate anywhere in there.
That it could be less.
That's not community groups, those are school groups.
You're right.
Yeah.
I don't see where the language regarding community groups.
I, I just, I read it as community groups.
So, that's.
So, that's not what it intended.
So, that, yeah, any school groups would be, you know, musical, youth practices, what have you.
Is this 90 days, was that in there or that was?
It was 30 days and we changed it to 90 days.
I mean, 90 days even for school group seems.
Seems long.
Seems like a lot.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be concerned, for example, if, you know, somebody's new at lab school and they want to run the barbecue and they forget and they don't get the request in on time, you know, in 90 days, because up till now, it's been, you know, 30.
It seems like a long time.
And usually, they're used to that. So, if we're going to change it, I think we have to do a little education.
Well, we could change required to request that they submit.
Recommended that they submit.
And that way, if they have a need that's less than 90 days, they're not prohibited from.
I don't, I just don't remember, when we did the policy, I don't remember, did we discuss the rationale for why 90 days?
And I'd have to go back in and look at my notes, it's been.
I don't recall offhand.
So, I'm fine if you want to pull it, we'll go back and look at it and bring it back up to.
Actually, the language that we took out was one month prior to the commencement of each semester.
Oh.
So, we took out that, like, we didn't, it wasn't one month before, it was one month prior to commencement.
Because I thought we had loosened it up a little bit to make it easier for groups to.
Right, so that is actually looser, but it still seems.
Long.
Well, I think if we just change it to, are requested to submit a schedule.
Because in the end, it's still at the discretion of the administration.
Right, yes.
And they're going to accommodate to the best of their ability.
Right.
Is everybody okay with that change?
Yes.
Requested to requested.
Okay, did you have anything else, Meredith?
No.
Okay.
Yes, on, I had a question as to why, for example, on permitted uses under E, I understand why we're taking polling places out, it seems.
We're still talking about 1500, I just wanted to.
Oh, I thought that was, it is 1500.
No, I know, I'm just double checking.
Yeah, no, it's 15, it's 1500.
Yeah, I know.
I wouldn't jump on you like that. So, in permitted uses under E, I understand we're taking polling places out because that's what basically, schools don't want to have that exposure anymore, but I was.
What page is that on?
First page, permitted uses, it's paragraph E. And I was questioning the political meeting sponsored by a nonpartisan entity such as League of Women Voters. Now, I know that wouldn't affect, for example, the meet the candidates night, because that's a school function, but if the League of Women Voters came in to do, say, a civics education piece or something like that, they were asked to come in and teach about parliamentary procedure or something like that, or we, or, or a group wanted to bring them in to do something like that, is that the kind of, a nonpartisan group, they have a specialty? If it's not to endorse a particular candidate or a particular view, are we still going to restrict it?
Isn't that now F?
F, yes.
So, it's people get F, where it says civic forums and community meetings intended to encourage civic participation.
So, long, so long as it's included there.
Right.
Because, you know, on one, you're saying such as League of Women Voters and maybe that was the best example you had, but I wasn't sure that it would then be included in F. But if it is, I have no problem.
I believe so, I think that's why we need that change.
The intent was that it would be included in F.
Okay. And then, my other question was, on the next page, under prohibited uses C, when we're talking about limiting the, the type of group, for example, an association, what are we thinking about there? When we say association, I don't know what the BOU is, is it an association, is it incorporated, is it a nonprofit entity? But, there are many nonprofits that are constructed as associations. They are not legally, according to the IRS, 501(c)(3)'s, they haven't filed, but they are associations. So, what, what is the intent as far as associations?
If it's an event that is exclusive, so that others are not allowed to participate and if they're raising money that is for the benefit of this exclusive organization, that is the intent, is to prohibit those types of uses.
So, not a, like, a public venue like the Spelling Bee or something?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if the language was instead of under the exclusive control of, somehow, we indicated it was, as you said, exclusive participation, I think I'd be more comfortable with it.
Exclusive participation.
Because, say, the Spelling Bee was under the exclusive control of the BOU, but it was not exclusive because the entire public was invited.
Right, right. But if it was only for whatever, I mean, you know, only, only chimpanzees could, could play, not, not orangutans, then, if it's the best I can do on short notice, give me a break here.
And those types of groups are for the benefit of the school community and, in fact, if you look to the rate schedule, they get discounted rates, basically no rates if they're under, like, the umbrella organizations of the school, so.
I just think it would be helpful if we could indicate that this is exclusive, as far as participation is exclusive, as opposed to the way, the way it reads right now.
I'd like to suggest that we pull this so that we can get some guidance from our attorneys on the language.
Or C.
This was from the attorneys.
Well, now that the objection has been raised, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Is everybody okay with?
Thank you for doing that. And that's all I have on this.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Of what?
Oh, I'm sorry, of items one through three with taking out policies 1500 and 2160. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes.
Thank you.
And next, we will recognize visitors on a non-agenda item, if there's anyone who would like to address the board. Okay, okay. Future meetings and events, next board meeting will be Wednesday, March 20th at 7:00 PM with an anticipated executive session, that's going to be at 5:30 instead of 6:00 as on the agenda. There will be a policy committee meeting on March 25th, so you'll probably have another list of policies to review after that. And then, the following board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 3rd, 7:00 PM at the high school, 6 o'clock anticipated executive session. There's no reason. There's no reason for us to go back into executive sessions, how can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.